Aloha and good morning. We are convening our committee on water and land. I am vice chair Rochelle Lamassal and sitting next to me is our chair, Mark Asham. We are in room 411 and today is March 20, Tuesday, March 25, 2025. And we are starting our committee hearing at 9:44 for our 9:40 a.m. agenda. Okay, before we get started, I do want to go over some rules for this committee. So in order to allow as many people to testify as possible, there will be a two-minute time limit per testifier. Because morning hearings must adjourn prior to floor session. Not all testifiers may have the opportunity to testify. In the event, please know that your written testimony will be considered by the committee. For those on Zoom, please keep yourself muted if, and you're muted, your video off while waiting for test, to testify and after your testimony is complete. The Zoom chat feature will allow you to chat only with the technical staff only. Please use the chat only for technical issues. If you are disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting. If disconnected while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. Please note, the House is not responsible for any bad internet connections on the testifier's end. In the end of the network, in the event that we have a network failure, failure, it may be necessary to reschedule the hearing or schedule a meeting for decision-making. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please avoid using any trademarked marketed or copyrighted image on YouTube, or sorry, on Zoom for YouTube purposes. Please refrain from profanity or uncivil behavior. Such behavior may be grounds for removal from the hearing here in this room without, and/or on Zoom, without the ability to rejoin this hearing. Okay, so, thank you. So for our 9:40 agenda, we did delete HCR 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. The intention is to wait for the Senate concurrent resolutions, which are pretty much similar to these that were posted. So we are going to consider them when the Senate crosses, Senate bills cross over. So first up is HR 35, HCR 40. So we are going to be hearing our resos in tandem if there is a HCR and an HR available for each resol. So the first one is HR 35, HCR 40 urging the Department of Land and Natural Resources and other state agencies to work with committed, community groups to co-steward community forests located on public lands for the betterment of the state's forests and communities. So first up, we have Heather McMillan from DLNR.
Aloha, my Heather McMillan, urban and community forester with DLNR. We stand in strong support of this measure and stand on our written testimony. Happen, happy to answer any questions from the committee here.
Thank you, Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii. Okay, seeing none, let's, I do have Purple, Mahief, Maiai Foundation? Mahief Foundation in support, Climate Change and Health Working Group in support, Kuaina Ulu Aomol in support, and two other individuals in support. Are there anyone here in the room willing to testify? Anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, moving on to HR, oh, sorry, any questions, member? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to HR 58, HCR 64 requesting the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development to convene a working group to evaluate the establishment and administrative placement of the Office of Resilience and Recovery. So we have Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. Present. OPSD.
Morning, Vice Chair of Chair and members. I'm Mary Alice Evans with the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. We strongly support this resolution and we offer an amendment that I forgot to offer to the Senate when they asked for them. So I would ask that the House consider this one. And that is to revise the group membership to replace the county civil defense representative with the mayor or designee, which will give the mayors of each county flexibility in selecting the representative for their county that is most aligned with resilience and recovery.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Hawaii Office of the Governor, or Office of the Governor, Recovery and Resiliency Unit.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Luke Myers, branch chief of the Office of Urban Resiliency. We stand on our testimony, similar to Mary Alice's comments. We would recommend one friendly amendment to allow the mayor's designee to focus on either a recover resiliency subject matter expert in light of, or in addition to, the emergency management specialist. Available for any questions and thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Lea Laramie with the Hawaii State Climate Change Mitigation Adaptation Commission. We stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you. Next up, we have Border Water Supply.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Kathy Mitchell with the Border Water Supply. We stand in support of House Resolution 58 and House Concurrent Resolution 64. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all we have registered to testify. Anyone willing to testify in the room? No one on Zoom? Any questions, member? Rep. Bellotti?
Mr. Myers, please. And I promise I'll be, this will be short, but I, again, new to this committee. Can you describe what the Office of Recovery and Resiliency, when, one, when it was set up? And what, what have you folks done?
Yes, ma'am. So the Office of Recovery and Resiliency is a special project that was created by Governor Green post the Maui wildfires. Acting as State Disaster Recovery Coordinator, we've led the long-term recovery efforts in coordination with the federal government in Maui County and private partners since that effort. Currently, one of our main priorities is looking at long-term cost and fiscal tracking of the investments that have been made and working on the state's recovery operations plan.
How is this different from the Office of Wellness and Recovery or the other resiliency office that we have? And then, I guess, what is it that you're doing that Haema shouldn't already have been taken care of?
Good questions. So the difference between the Office of Wellness and Resilience and the Office of Recovery and Resiliency, we are responsible for, on the recovery and resiliency side, in coordinating the state recovery support functions. We have seven recovery support functions that work with the federal government and our county agencies that when we have large-scale disasters, we look at the long-term impacts, whether that's on transportation, housing, a number of different areas. So we do that coordination. The Office of Wellness and Resilience focuses on the mental well, health, well-being of the survivors and others in the community. We do have a close working relationship with Haema at the State Department of the Defense. They primarily are focused on the response side and the Stafford Act missions on the federal emergency management. We look at the, the long-term recovery items, which may include block grant funding and other federal dollars.
Normally, are special projects continued?
In previous experience at, at Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, I was the administrator there. I've seen special projects go for a number of years, up to five years. We do, we have leveraged special projects in the past in this state on the emergency management recovery side due to the nature of the funding. It has been inconsistent and the special projects have been a vehicle for that.
So is the, is the intent, and the belief that because Lahaina funding is going to be going much longer, because, do we have a special, for example, do we have a special project continuing on with COVID emergencies?
On the state emergency management side, when they get Stafford Act funding, the, the public assistance programs, the individual assistance programs, the hazard mitigation grant programs, I do know that state emergency management does leverage special projects for each open disaster. So there are multiple open disasters that we have in this state going back for many years. If you go back to the 2018 disasters, we had the lava on the Big Island. We had Hurricane Lane. We have had the COVID-19 incident. So there are project positions funded by a special project that use a mix of federal and state dollars. So specifically for the Lahaina fires, we were very fortunate that the state actually invested in capabilities for long-term recovery, not specifically relying on federal dollars.
So ORR already has a separate line item with general funds, is what you're saying?
As a special project-funded position, yes, ma'am.
Within Haema, with A funds and not FEMA funds?
Not in Haema, not in Haema, ma'am.
In governor's office?
Yes, ma'am.
With federal funds or A funds?
I think there were previous federal funds that were set aside.
Any A funds at this time?
I am not sure on that. I can get back to you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I guess, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, members? All right, seeing none, we are moving on to the next resolution. HR 59, HCR 65 requesting the Land Use Commission to coordinate with county planning commissions and county councils to conduct current reviews, concurrent reviews of general plan amendments, district boundary amendments, and zoning amendments when reclassifying land. First up, we have OPSD.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Aaron Setogaw. I'm with the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. OPSD stands on its written testimony with comments.
Thank you. Next up, we have LUC. Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the room willing to testify? That's all we have testified. Any questions, members?
I have one question.
Okay.
OPSD.
It's curious to me that in your testimony, you say spot plan amendment, and that just triggers for me, spot zoning. Is that a good or bad practice?
It's a bad practice.
Okay, so is this an example of?
Our concern is that if, if an individual, for example, if this becomes a, a process is established, our concern that an individual property owner can request a simultaneous concurrent land use commission, district boundary amendment, plan amendment, and a zoning amendment at the same time. And the difference between that and the county's processing for the general plan amendment is they go through a whole process of, of hearings, consultation with a number of, of, you know, adjacent landowners, and so it's a larger process. Whereas if an individual landowner comes in under this and is granted, you could end up with a parcel, individual parcel that all of a sudden went from the ag district to, say, the rural or urban district. And it's in the county amendment to that, and the zoning amendment, and it'd be out there like an island by itself. So we would prefer more, if this goes forward, we prefer it to be more restricted to county planning department-initiated actions.
And then, I guess, maybe just for everybody else, can you just define what spot zoning is? Because I might be using a term that others don't understand.
Spot zoning, for example, is where an individual parcel is zoned urban and it's surrounded by parcels in the ag district. Or in the case of county zoning, it'd be zoned, zoned, for example, urban, again, within a, a larger agriculture area. In other words, it's not contiguous, it's not a rational overall plan, and not supported by county infrastructure.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair. Go ahead.
Just to follow up, excuse me, just to follow up. You're saying the resolution, as it's currently written, may make it easier to do spot zoning?
Yes, if an individual landowner, if the process is set up, an individual landowner applies for this concurrent process, you may end up with that situation.
Can I have one follow-up question with the, no, not this, with another? Okay, with LUC. So hearing that, and I noticed your tepid testimony. How, how do you respond to that?
We agree with OPSD in terms of spot zoning is a bad idea. We hope that the counties would ensure that there will be no spot zoning. And that's why we're happy to work with the counties to try and assist in no-spot zoning.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next resol on the agenda. Have HR 118, HCR 122 requesting the Department of Land and Natural Resources to establish a collaborative working group to survey.
a collaborative working group to survey, identify, and monitor culturally sensitive shorelines impacted by erosion. First up, we have DLNR.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair members of the committee. I'm Jessica Puff, the Administrator of SHPD, and we stand on our testimony and the comments we've provided. We're here for any questions you have.
Thank you. Next up, we have OHA.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair members of the committee. Lena Alale, Director of Advocacy with OHA. We stand on our written testimony with the suggested addition of the Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands as a named party to the working group. Mahalo.
Thank you. We don't have anybody on Zoom. Anyone in the room wanting to testify? Go ahead.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. Edward Haleloha, Ya'hu'iwi'kuamau. I wanted to support OHA's testimony on this resolution and ask that you give it careful consideration. Mahalo.
Thank you. Anyone else willing to testify for this resol? Oh, okay. We have one person on Zoom, actually. Anna?
Aloha Kako. Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Mahana Kupoi. I am a current undergraduate at the University of Hawaii and a student intern for the Climate Change and Health Working Group. I stand before you today as a native Hawaiian or Kanaka'o'iwi', people connected to the kupuna who's iwi rest beneath the lands that I call home. My identity is shaped not just by my family, but by the legacy of my ancestors who walked these lands before me. As a native Hawaiian, iwi kupuna are not merely remains, they are a testament to our belonging here. The bones of our ancestors shape the land itself, and their presence in the earth acknowledges our existence, our connection, and our place in this world. As we face the impacts of climate change, our islands are experiencing intense coastal erosion, which threatens the resting places of our ancestors. This erosion endangers the bond between the people of today and all those that come before us that shape the very Hawaii this legislature serves. House Resolution 118 is a means of protecting our ancestors. In protecting them, we preserve the ties between Hawaiians and their lands vital to their identities. The inclusion of representatives from different groups and agencies enables a collaborative effort that is essential to protect our ancestral lands while ensuring the voices of our community are heard. For all these reasons, I urge you to support this resolution. It is not just a policy, it is a commitment to protecting the foundation of native Hawaiian existence and belonging to these islands that we call home. Mahalo for considering this important measure. We move forward, may we move forward in a way that honors the legacy of our kupuna and strengthens the cultural vitality of our community. Aloha.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none? Okay. Any questions, member?
I have a question.
Okay. Representative Iwamono.
Thank you. Perhaps it's a question to the testifier on Zoom, and I apologize in advance if this is, I apologize for my ignorance, but when we talk about iwi kupuna and when iwi were buried along within like the sand dunes or within the sandy shorelines, you know, when high tides came up or if they were ever disturbed by the ocean, was it a cultural practice to move them further, move them to another location? Or is it culturally aligned for the ocean to take the bones?
I'm not sure, but I do know that things like that would be discussed within the working group. And I think within such a collaborative working group, ideas like that and cultural significant things like that will come up and we'll be able to make a culturally sensitive decision on the iwi.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Representative Bellotti?
I have a question for DLNR and possibly OHA. So I was really interested in watching the news last night to see the decision on iwi kupuna come out, this court decision?
I'm not up to date on that. I did not hear that last night. I'm learning in real time.
All right, so I guess, well, what I wanted to ask is in the context of that lawsuit that was just like, it wasn't used last night? And I, again, don't follow this, want to be educated. Can you comment on how this, and if you can't, then you can come back later, just comment on how this may help inform some of the litigation around that, around that?
Not having read the news article, I think that one of the purposes of this legislation, and there was a bill that was introduced earlier this session that didn't quite make it through that would study this as well, is to be more proactive and engaging with the community about decisions regarding iwi. And at the same time, trying to establish some sort of guide for how to address the issue of impacts to iwi in a more programmatic approach. Because it's kind of two-handed. On one hand, we need a better, we need a better plan. But on another hand, it is so community and descendant-driven, like the decisions that are being made and ensuring that the descendants have a voice and are consulted with. And also, the existing rules related to inadvertent discovery of iwi, it is placed in the hands of shipti to make decisions about the treatment of iwi. And this approach would, I think, be a more community-guided plan to shipti, to the state on the treatment of iwi as a whole. We've had discussions about things like shipti's desire to perhaps establish burial vaults in Ahupua'a specific so that iwi isn't removed from the location in which they are. And that is not necessarily a universal-supported idea is to remove iwi from the shoreline to a burial vault. So we would hope that the working group would guide those discussions and shipti's policies as opposed to shipti just making those decisions for ourselves, you know, independently inside of our own agency. So I don't know if that helps to answer your question.
That does help. And if I could ask the same question of the OHA representative, and I'm looking at the Hawaii News Now video, and the case is, it's an ICA case with BLNR. If you can comment, and if you can't, you can, and we can always ask you to come back. But it seems like this might be a good thing.
The Comocanafar lead compliance specialist with the Office of Foreign Affairs actually had a case more so had to do with archaeological permits. It doesn't really have any relation to what this working group would be doing, so.
Okay. The title of the news article is "News Court Ruling Claims State Failed to Protect iwi kupuna at Maui Housing Development Site."
I think both this working group and the other one that is gonna be heard by the committee this morning are beneficial to the extent that they, you know, facilitate greater communication between shipti and OHA and the community about what can be done to improve protections for iwi. Not commenting directly on the content of the ruling, but to your larger question of improving how iwi are taken care of across the state. I think both these resolutions and working groups would help address some of those problems.
Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move, oh, sorry, Representative Kupoi.
Oh, for Haleloha. I was, I think to expand on Rep Iwamono's question, if you, I don't know if she should repeat it, or if you could comment on that from, you know, your expertise of the complexities of, you know, the whole burial treatment plan process.
So Mike Kumar, Edward and Paulani Kanakola Kanahele, I've been doing the care and protection of iwi kupuna for 35 years, so to answer your question, we cannot tell you because we wasn't there. But when we, when our ancestors committed the iwi kupuna to the earth, her name is Papa Hanau Moku. Of course, they knew that erosion occurred. It occurred back then, it's occurring now. So in some communities, they say, the transition from Papa to Kanaloa, Kanaloa is the ocean, is the natural process that was anticipated, so they just let it go. They protect the process of transition. Other communities say, no, we want to maintain the protection of Papa on those iwi kupunas, so we move them inland. So the answer is, whatever the families in that community say, there is no, we're not, the assumption is that all Hawaiians are the same, we're not. We are defined by the islands we're from. I'm from Ola'kai, that's why I act the way I do. But Kauai different, Maui different, so it's all dependent on the families of the community as OHA folks are testifying. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we're gonna move on to HR 145, HCR 151 requesting the Department of Land and Natural Resources to submit a detailed report on its leases, or lease enforcement process and procedures. DLNR is first.
Good morning, the department's fans answered your testimony. Opposition available for questions?
That's all we have registered to testify. Anyone wanting to testify on this measure? Anyone? Okay, nobody on Zoom? Okay. Any questions, members?
Representative Russell Tsuji here on Zoom. I thought we would have had a representative inside the room.
He's here. He's here. Thank you Russell. Okay. All right. Any questions, members, on this measure?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me just pull up, sorry, once.
Okay, while you ask, look for your, I'll ask a question for DLNR. Maybe, are you Kevin?
Yeah, good morning. Kevin Moore, DLNR Land Division.
And, or Russell, maybe you can help me understand. So I see in your testimony that you folks are looking to recruit and fill positions to have the land division to do inspection on leases once every two years. So upon filling these positions, when can you start doing inspections?
Russell, do you want to take that? I mean, as soon as we get the positions filled?
No, I don't have anything to comment on filling of the positions, but I did want to comment in general on the resolution if, after, after Kevin's finished. The question is about filling the position?
Filling the positions and when, so after, like, when can you start? Because this resol requires you to submit a report in 20 days prior to 2026 legislative session. So if you don't fill those positions, like, what are you able to fulfill the requests of this report, essentially?
Well, I mean, if the resolution passes and it's, we have to submit a report, we'll do it, but it's hard to answer the question on filling the positions in part because some of them have been open for months and we haven't got them filled. We've interviewed and made offers, but the applicants have not accepted because of compensation. Pay is too low, so we've got to find applicants, recruit them, train them. Getting all that done in a way that will make a significant difference before next session is probably hard to do.
Okay. I do have a follow-up question then. Since you're having difficulty filling these positions, on your, in your testimony, you also mentioned that the House Investigative Committee had recommended that you folks hire a third-party inspector to conduct physical inspections of all these properties every five years to ensure compliance. So I just wanted to get your take on that and if you folks are exploring maybe setting aside funds for that type of work.
So the provision that you referenced there, it actually would pass the burden of the inspection on to the lessee. But we can't do that with existing leases because it's not part of the contract. For new leases, we have a provision going in that will give, you know, the department the right to require those inspections unless he pay for them. Apart from that specific provision, we have used our own funds to contract with a third-party inspector to do inspections on some of our commercial properties.
Would we be able to retroactive these, that, I guess, that recommendation in some of the current leases?
So I don't think we can retroactive the part that makes them pay for it because that would be a contractual issue under the Constitution, but we can pay for them and going forward, we can definitely ask the lessee to pay.
Okay. Can I follow up on that? Okay. Oh, sorry. Sorry Russell, when I asked for testimony, you should have just gave your testimony. So hold on, yeah. I'm gonna have Representative Bellotti ask her question.
It's a follow-up and a clarification, further clarification, I think, of Rep Lamisal's question. When you do renewals of those leases, at that point, you can renegotiate? And have you done that?
Yes, so.
For the inspections?
Right. Okay, so for lease extensions, we now have clearance from the Department of the Attorney General to update all lease terms and conditions. So it's going into the extension leases.
So would we be able to get a list from you of? There's a little bit of background, I was involved in that special audit.
I remember.
Right? So it's important for us to know when these leases are coming up, when the renewals can happen, and if you guys, if you DLNR has been successful at renegotiating these inspections, which is, I believe, a fair burden to place for the benefit of a renewal. Can you provide that information to us for all the leases that you folks have?
Yeah, I don't think that would be a problem. We, you know, that's a fairly recent development, so we're only looking back a couple of years.
And then, moving forward, if there's old leases that are coming due, when, at what point are those renegotiations happening so we can hold the department accountable to negotiate the best absolute deal for the state? Can you give us a timeline for those leases coming due? And you don't have to answer now, but if you could go back and provide that information, that would be very helpful.
Yes.
Thank you.
May I, if I can add to clarify that, Representative Bellotti? The department doesn't negotiate necessarily until the land board in an open sunshine meeting has approved such an extension. And if the terms and conditions have not been nailed down, then it may say, the parties may negotiate. At some point, it will have to come back, all of the terms and conditions will go back to the board, or at least be approved by the Attorney General's office. But the board must act on the extension. By simply applying, the department does not negotiate because all of the lease, extensions, terminations is never a department decision, but it's a board decision in a sunshine meeting. Just to clarify on that point.
And then, one follow-up. So the board has now been instructed that this is something that is in their power from what I've heard from the previous testifier, that the AG has now made this available. And so, is it in the staff's recommendation that the board take this issue up proactively? Again, the point is to negotiate.
Yes, if we're gonna add such a provision, it has to be, that's correct.
And it's like the default now?
For presentation.
And it's a default now versus, it's a default to go to that position?
I'm sorry, with respect to the?
With respect to the policy?
Lessee paying the inspection fee or something?
When the, when the, when the time is coming up, what I want to, like, I think I wanted to hear, and I see the head nodding here, that the default now is for, to inform the board that they have this authority, the AG has cleared it, and now the board has absolute authority.
As to the inspections, the hiring of a third-party inspector.
Yeah. And has absolutely that authority to ask for better and to negotiate for the best possible position for the state.
Yeah, oftentimes in that provision, we recommend the assertion or requirement that it be added to the new lease. If we're talking about a new lease or an extended period, it would be normally a standard term for the provision. Yes, that's our recommendation. Not so much, not too much to negotiation because the legislature has decided that it is appropriate to place them in new leases and if we can, under extension agreements. AG has decided it can, so we will be imposing those provisions into the new lease.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Russell, before we start, I'm gonna have you finish your comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, generally, I just want to comment, I was going through the whereas clauses, I think there might be some misunderstanding. I just wanted to clarify, because there is one whereas that says, the department has stated that it maintains a policy of not renewing and issuing leases, et cetera. And I would say, no, we don't have such a policy. The law, HRS 17113, actually is the statute that says. The law, HRS 17113, actually is the statute that says no lease shall be, no applicant shall be eligible for a new lease if they have had a lease or permit terminated for failure to cure, you know, one of the defaults under a prior agreement. So it requires the lease, the lease or permit to have been terminated. The mere fact that you missed one payment or missed a second payment does not prohibit you from applying for a new lease. In fact, nothing, nothing happens unless the staff, we bring it to before the board, notifying the board of the lease violation. And if the lesssee was given opportunity to cure and doesn't cure, the staff may have a recommendation perhaps for lease termination. And it will be a board decision in an open meeting, sunshine. Second, there was, I just wanted to make clear too. Also, there is a lot of references to the department. A lot of these decisions on leases, issuance of leases, any kind of default correction or mitigation plan, any, any default situation or, and ultimately a lease termination. All of that is decisions for a sunshine meeting, open meeting, sunshine, clear transparency. There is nothing done behind closed doors. That's really what I wanted to say, and if you have any questions, I wanted to talk about it because there is some issues here that seem that we're doing things with a lack of transparency. But all of these decisions, these major decisions on leases are done in a sunshine meeting, agendized, public meetings, public is free to come. Available for questions if you have any other on those topics.
Thank you, Russell. Representative Evil Moto.
Thank you for the department. So it's my understanding that this resolution was kind of drafted as a consolation to the bill that was basically trying to do a tenant in good standing for renewals and extensions and new leases of existing tenants. I guess I'm surprised that it sounds like, according to the testimony offered by the department, that there were no leases ever terminated. When I, when the public knows about instances where environmental cleanup MOUs were not completed on time, when there may be, you know, violations of federal laws, environmental protections, but leases weren't terminated. So there's this kind of, I appreciate the transparency, but there seems to be some kind of disconnect between what's reported in the media and then what we see kind of not happening. Unless, unless you can say that the department has recommended termination of a lease because of violations of law, because of MOUs for cleaning up of land was not followed. I mean, was, am I making that stuff up? That none of this stuff, no, no, no tenant of state lands has ever violated an environmental law that would have led to a termination? Or no tenant has ever violated an MOU to clean up land? Is that all just, am I totally off base?
Let me try and respond, and then Kevin can add if I miss anything. As far as, I'm trying to think back, I don't recall a lease being terminated for an environmental issue and fail to clean that up. Oftentimes, at the end of a lease, at the end of the terminal lease, the lesssee wants to get off the property. We require a, you know, at least normally our standard lease requires a phase-one study to try to assure that the property is clean. If it does require cleanup, try to, try to require the lesssee to do it. And now, keeping that in mind, when I say require, we have to go back to the terms of the lease. Many of the 1960s issued leases do not have such a requirement. Today, we do. Okay. However, so we got to go back to the lease terms. And so sometimes we're in a situation where there's potentially some cleanup that should be done, but it's not obligated upon the lesssee under the terms of the lease. And so we're in that quandary. That's the kind of situations we have. But have at least been terminated for environmental problems? I don't recall. None of the military leases, certainly. If there's any implication in this resol to indicate that we terminated or NOD, meaning issued a formal letter of notice of default for environmental problems or non-compliance to the military of any leases. I don't recall ever doing that. Because that, that requires a notice, you know, and then in all of our leases, there's opportunity to cure, you know, within a certain time period, et cetera. And if you cure it, it comes off your, your list and you cannot terminate the lease just because after they cleaned it up, you know, kind of thing. Yeah, so. But Kevin, you know, you can add. However, we have taken recommendations for lease terminations, like, for example, fail to pay rent, maybe lack of insurance on the property repeatedly over a number of years despite warnings and betters in that kind of situations. And it is a land board decision. Is it automatically that just because staff recommends a termination that the board will approve it? The answer is no.
Got it.
Answer is no. It is open, public meeting, and it requires a majority vote. Public is free to testify, including the tenant, et cetera.
Thank you, thank you. And so I think what this resolution is trying to do also is to get, I guess, D L N R to see the state of Hawaii as a whole and not just as a tenant of state lands. In terms of the state of Hawaii as a whole, like, other agencies might have an issue with environmental protections being, not being followed. Or the Department of Defense, perhaps, not remitting the entirety of impact aid to the Hawaii Department of Education. So the state of Hawaii is the entity that holds the land. The D L N R and B L N R does effectuate the leases, but potentially it's an offense to the entire state for a tenant to, and this is where the arrears comes in, to lack of payment. It's not just payment of rent. It's payment, it could be seen as an offense to the entire state budget that the, one of our tenants is failing to remit the full amount of impact aid that the Hawaii Department of Education is owed. And that's what I'm getting, I think that's what this is getting at. That's what the initial bill to talk about tenants in good standing. The offense isn't, again, just to a lease. The offense is to the state, which is the landowner. So if you're gonna enter into another lease or extension of a lease or a new lease for land, and you're a tenant who's not in good standing, meaning you owe the state of Hawaii, maybe a different department than D L N R, B L N R, but you owe the state monies. That's where we feel like somebody should be paying attention to that tenant's practices.
If I may, yes, there is a statute that says if you are in arrears of payment of taxes or anything owed to the state, then that would prohibit the issuance of a new lease. What I was trying to point out was the provision that actually strictly prohibits you from applying or even getting a leases actually requires a past history of a lease termination, not simply a past default. But at the time, if you're applying for an extension and you're an existing lesssee and you, and we find out that you owe, for example, state of Hawaii taxes, then we'll try to make sure that we, you know, let the tenant applicant know that this is gonna be an issue going before the board, which will not be able to give you the extension until you cure that default.
And I just want to make sure that it's not limited to taxes. There's other forms of remittance that should be collected from people. I'm just.
Again, the statute I'm referring to is in 171, I believe it's 36, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. You have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. So going off of Representative Evil Moto, Kevin, you can answer this probably. So you, I'm assuming that D L N R requires vendor compliance certificate, correct?
Yes.
But the vendor's compliance certificate doesn't quite cover every default. So like, Russell, you were, you were talking about if they're in default, but that's mainly in default to the current lease, correct? Or provisions of the lease?
Being default is not a termination, right? And it's just that you made that.
Yes, until they cure it, right? And they come back to compliance.
They can comply, yeah, they can.
So we have an issue with people, let's say, Sand Island, a construction company that is in litigation with the state for defective construction, construction defects on a contract that they have with the state and they have outstanding debt. But they're on state land in Sand Island. Is there any way to cover, is there any way to check for that default? It's not the default on the lease, per se, but it's, they're in debt to the, they, they may have outstanding debts to the state, to the Department of Education. Is there any way, how would we address that, is my question?
Well, that's, that's a tough one for Sand Island, especially because the state just has the master lease and a construction company would be a sublesssee of the master tenant. So we don't have a direct.
All right, okay. Some other one. Uncle Billy's are, Uncle Billy's, I mean, right? A different, like, some other land lease of some sort, but.
Yeah.
It's.
Go ahead, Russell.
Well, go ahead, Kevin. I'll follow up after you.
Again, our leases don't really cover that, especially the older ones, as Russell alluded to, they.
Well, my question is, how do we make it cover?
Okay, so you would have to draft a lease provision that captured that and incorporated in the lease.
Okay, can we work on that going forward? It doesn't have to be in the resol, but I mean, it may be an issue going forward that if, if the, if somebody is applying for a lease or extending their lease, it's not just vendor compliance or we gotta expand the vendor compliance just beyond what it's tracking now. If there's any outstanding debt to the state owed. Because it doesn't make sense for us to be giving leases to somebody that's in debt to the state $20 million because of some lawsuit that they haven't paid up. So.
Yeah.
Okay, can we work on this over the interim? We're not gonna solve this issue. You see where I'm going, right, or Representative Evil Moto is going down?
Yeah, and maybe we could work on this together, Chair, offline as well because there are situations where lesssees have payment plans, for example, for real property taxes, the county. And our leases actually allow tenants to dispute allegations of, you know, if they're owed real property taxes and they dispute the county's valuation, they can contest it and go through that process. And we don't think it's fair to use that against them while they're contesting, unless they have a decision or a judgment against them. And they don't have to cure that, but, or set it aside so it doesn't affect the lease. But that's the kind of situations we often talk about is because the tenant also has a right to contest, right?
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Any other questions? Representative Poipoi.
Thank you for D L N R. Just, I think, to clarify on something that was asked earlier and responded to. When you issue new leases, do you include a provision requiring the tenant or the applicant to return or maintain the land in equal or better condition?
Yeah, the short answer is yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next measure on the agenda. We have HR 185 requests and HCR 191 requesting the Department of Land and Natural Resources to convene a Kailua Bay Advisory Working Group. There's no one on our testifiers list that's registered to testify. Anyone in the room wishing to testify? Okay, go ahead, Kira. You can just give your whole testimony if you want to.
Oh, okay, yeah. I apologize, I'm not sure why that wasn't included in the packet. But we, the department submitted comments on this bill. Oh, by the way, Kira Kahahane, D L N R. So I'll just, I'll just read from our testimony.
Sorry, you are on, but yeah, you folks aren't registered, so just go ahead, though.
Okay, yeah. So the Department of, the Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation collaborates with the peer users on management strategies at present. Of course, people have raised concerns about public safety in the region. So under emergency rules that D O B O R was able to promulgate, they were able to establish closure hours for the pier from 10:30 to 4:30 a.m. D O B O R is working on implementing a permanent version of those rules that would authorize it to set hours of operation to provide an enforcement tool and help deter criminal activity. So unfortunately, no one from D O B O R is available right now, but those were our comments on the bill. Mahalo.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wanting to testify or on Zoom? All right, seeing none, any questions, members? Okay, no questions. We're gonna move on to our next measure. HR 186, HCR 193 requesting the Office of Hawaiian Affairs to convene a working group to examine and consider the transfer of native Hawaiian burial site management under Chapter 6E, what E revised statutes from the State Historic Preservation Division to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. First up, we have D L N R.
Good morning again, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Jessica Puff with S H P D. We stand on our written testimony and the comments we provided. We're here for any questions that you have.
Thank you. And we have, next up, we have OHA.
Aloha, Lena Alalea, Chief Advocate, OHA. We stand on our written comments in support. OHA drafted and requested that this resolution be introduced. And we are not opposed to the amendments that Shipti has provided in their written comments because it's important that the agencies go into the process with a clear mandate and understanding of what's being asked of them and that the process is inclusive as possible. Mahalo.
Thank you. And then we have Edward Haleo Ha. Ayu? Hayao? Sorry.
Edward Haleo Ha Yau, Executive Director, Huivikuamou. So if you remember, I testified in the other bill and told you guys that that wasn't the issue. This is the issue. This is the important one. That's why we support it wholeheartedly, maybe had a hand in creating this idea. But the report that OHA cited previously, the Barrow Sites Working Group that the legislature established, I was vice chair, we submitted our report. The gist of that report was what's being recommended in this resolution, and that's why we support it. Because of this history of mismanagement of the Barrow Sites program by S H P D, not Ms. Puff, her predecessors. And the real need to look carefully, you know, if you recall, the OHA CEO said that the developers being on, the councils are just theater. But, but, and, you know, I disagreed. But really, the problem, as we tried to explain then, was the mismanagement by S H P D. That's the real issue. And we want to be able to study the problems. In Hawaiian, it would be mukavalu, means take it apart, look at, study all the individual pieces and then understand it better. Develop a report, come back to the legislature and say, this is what we've been able to find. This is what we recommend in terms of legislation. And, and the CEO of OHA also said that, you know, the councils represent the greatest expression of self-determination by Hawaiians. Actually, the councils managed by OHA will provide self-determination, an expression of self-determination. Thank you, D L N R. When the law was passed in 1990, that was on the cusp of the heels of Honokahu'a and people were very upset at OHA. And so the answer was, anybody but OHA. But today, I say only OHA. Only OHA because Hawaiians need to manage their ancestor burial sites. And when Ms. Puff said inadvertent discoveries are determined by D L N R, that's true under state law. And then with this study, hopefully, and the transfer of the program to OHA, OHA will be the ones deciding inadvertent discoveries only of Hawaiian burials. The state would have to maintain a Hawaiian, a barrow site program for non-Hawaiians. So there would be two barrow sites program, OHA for Hawaiians, D L N R for non-Hawaians. Mahalo. Any questions?
We'll do questions after. Yeah, we're done with all the testifiers, but I appreciate you folks working together, so thank you. Next up, we have, I believe, it's Kimmer Horson in person, not present. Okay. No one on Zoom, so any questions, members or testifiers? No questions, great. We're gonna move on, we're gonna move on. Okay, we're gonna move on, we're gonna move on to the next, um, measure on the agenda, HCR.
I'm sorry, I do have a question.
Okay, yeah.
For OHA, actually. So, um, with the, the discussion about, um, OHA becoming more like developers with Kakakau Makai land, um, you know, I mean, I can't imagine, I don't know if there would be even kind of found on the Makai side of Kakakau, given the history of that land, but maybe, I don't know. Um, but what would be the conflict? How would you resolve conflicts, um, moving forward if you guys move into the role, more of the role of developer? And you're also the host of the Barrow Council?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. Um, I mean, the burial councils are comprised of, you know, five or more than five. They're, they're nominated by OHA for the Moku seats and then the other seats are nominated by the governor. And so they're, I mean, they function as an independent body. And really, the role of whoever supports the burial councils is to make sure that, you know, they're compliant with public notice, that the members are trained on their statutory and administrative powers and duties to help them, you know, process paperwork. I think to the extent, um, you know, OHA, OHA's own lands were to be before the burial councils, I mean, it would still, we would still have the same duties, but we, we wouldn't in any event ever be, um, a decision maker. And sorry, there's, there's many things in addition to the burial councils that would be under consideration by the working group, but we wouldn't, um, you know, be at Shipti or OHA, you don't really control the IBCs, you support them and they're indecent, independent decision-making bodies. And obviously, you have a duty to provide them with all the information. You know, if OHA was the plan proponent and we were to find Evi, then we would be going before the burial council with our burial treatment plan for their, for their approval, like any other landowner would do. So I don't think there's a direct conflict in the.
We heard of the developer or the landowner, the large landowner individuals recusing themselves from deliberational vote.
Yes.
So I'm imagining all of the OHA designees recusing themselves, will they reform to vote on this?
Yeah, I don't think the OHA nominees would need to recuse themselves in that situation because OHA nominates individuals based on their qualifications, their cultural qualifications to sit on the IBC and their knowledge of Malama Evi practices. So really, you know, their qualifications to sit on the IBC have nothing to do with OHA. It has to do with their cultural background and their familiarity with those issues.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, moving on to HCR 197, requesting the Department of Land and Natural Resources to convene a working group to clarify the purpose of the Commission on Water Resource Management and determine whether the leadership structure and composition of the commission should be amended. We don't have anyone registered to testify in person today, but we do have a support from Ted Boland of the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. Anyone in the room wanting to testify? Okay, go ahead, Kira.
Aloha, Kira Kahahane, DLNR, Commission on Water Resource Management. I apologize for our late testimony today. I just wanted to note, um, so we submitted comments on this resolution. I wanted to note, when the review commission report came out in nineteen ninety-four, it contemplated that its recommendations would be adopted in some form and that there would be a follow-up review taking place ten years after those recommendations. But no follow-up review occurred. Since then, we've had the benefit of more than thirty years of case law, which have developed a robust body of legal interpretation of the public trust doctrine as applied specifically to water and the work of commission. And commission staff have had thirty years of experience working with the water code and with the way that our commission is currently set up. So we agree that the time is right to consider whether updates to the water code or changes to the commission's structure are appropriate. So we, we support the intent of this resolution. I'm available for any questions, but I, I truly think that this is an important issue and I thank you for introducing this reso.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Okay, any questions, members? Alright, wishes, okay, moving on to HCR 184, authorizing the Hawaii Community Development Authority to conduct a study to consider residential hotel and other land uses for the Kakakau Makai area. First up, we have HCDA.
Morning, Chair Ashram, Vice Chair Lamisaw, and Members of the Committee, Craig Nakamoto, Executive Director of HCDA. Uh, we provide testimony, offering comments. We appreciate the intent of this resolution. The resolution really validates what we've already started to do for Kakakau Makai in that, uh, we have, uh, we're engaging with a consultant, hope to finalize their contract in the next couple of weeks to engage in a community planning effort for Kakakau Makai, as we've testified in the past on other bills. So we're doing all those things. I'm joined here by my Planning and Development Director, Ryan Tam, Community Outreach Officer, Francine Murray. So I think while the resolution, you know, validates it, the resolution may not be necessary at this point because we've already started all the, so, all, all the work on this. Um, the board has authorized me in October to engage in the community planning session. I'm available for questions, thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the room wanting to testify on this measure? No one on Zoom, okay, um, any questions, members? Representative Yuwamoto?
Thank you, um.
Morning, Representative.
Good morning, thank you so much for, um, your testimony.
Of course.
When, um, given everything moving forward with the, the, I guess, the community engagement that you're planning on doing, when will that be done? Or do you imagine being, that, um, engagement being completed?
So, while we're looking at the, we're looking at the community proposal for, with the consultant, we hope to finalize that in the next couple of weeks with the scope. We anticipate that, um, everything will be completed by maybe end of twenty twenty-six and maybe provide an interim report to the legislature at the beginning of twenty twenty-six. We've divided the, uh, work into four phases. We expect that at the beginning of January twenty twenty-six, hopefully, if there's no delays, we'll be able to submit an interim report that shows the various land use scenarios that we're considering. Also, of all the studies that we've conducted up to that point. So, to answer your question, Representative Yuwamoto, maybe final, maybe in December of twenty twenty-six, around that timeframe, but maybe an interim report in, uh, before the, around the start of the January twenty twenty-six legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next measure on the, oh, can I ask a quick? Okay, sure, Representative Biladi, sorry, for HCR 197, go ahead.
If this, oh, sorry, 184. If this reso is not necessary, if it were to be revised to say that you folks, um, present, uh, make a presentation to this committee, um, you know, as part of this, and then submit that interim report, that would then, um, be parallel and actually would, would, would then make it something that's in alignment and add something, adds a requirement that is new and, and enforceable.
Yeah, um, thank you, Representative Biladi. I mean, I, I think if this committee wants to sort of revise the resolution to make it align with that schedule that I just talked about, I think that's okay. As far as enforceability, um, I, I'm committed to getting this thing done. We've, we've, we've started a process, so I don't think we need enforceability in all the respects. But, um, I'm happy if you wanna revise it to say, maybe an interim report, progress report will be presented around January twenty twenty-six. And if there's, if we run into some delays, a representative, uh, will let this committee know. Um, and then maybe a final report around December, end of December twenty twenty-six. So we're kind of looking at about a, um, maybe a, a year and a half or so from start to finish. Thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, any other questions? We are moving on to HR 124, HCR 128, reaffirming the state's obligation to uphold the constitutional rights of its people by recognizing the critical role of fresh water in maintaining healthy nearshore marine coast ecosystems. First up, we have DLNR.
Aloha, Kira Kahahane, DLNR, Commission on Water Resource Management. We support these resolutions. Um, if I may just very briefly note, um, of course, our muliwa, our koa, our limu, are part of aina, that which feeds us. Um, and under DLNR's purview, these are some of the natural resources that we need to steward. Freshwater is absolutely critical for these resources. And, um, while streams and their role has been very well studied, there is a developing incredible body of research about the role of groundwater in also sustaining some of these ecosystems such as ankylian pools and our coral reefs. So, the Commission on Water Resource Management and the Division of Aquatic Resources are working collaboratively to better understand biotic responses to freshwater flows and we look forward to increased collaboration between our two divisions within DLNR. We are engaged in ongoing efforts to kind of, um, to update the research, to understand the current state of the research and to develop methods to develop our groundwater-dependent ecosystems as well. So we appreciate the recognition that, um, of the role that freshwater plays in supporting healthy marine ecosystems and we support this measure. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, anyone else wanting to testify? Sorry, we, that's all we have registered to testify today, um, for this measure. But anyone else in the room? Alright, seeing none, we're going to go, oh, any questions, members?
I just have a comment.
Okay.
I love the drawing that was submitted as testimony.
Okay, uh, we're gonna go straight into decision-making. Since we have forum. So, are you ready?
Okay. Sounds like you made that mistake for two.
Thank you so much, okay, um, you ready, Chair?
Yep.
Okay, so, for our first measure on the agenda, HR thirty-five, we're gonna do it in tandem, if that's okay?
Yep.
Okay, HR thirty-five, HCR forty, um, we are going to pass this measure as is. Any questions, concerns? Okay, seeing none, Chair, you can go ahead and take the vote.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair's, wait, Vice Chair's recommendation is to pass HR thirty-five and HCR forty. Unamended, the Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Are there any reservations or no's? Seeing none? Okay, I'll take the vote for Representative Biladi.
Aye.
Ichiyama.
Aye.
Yuwamoto.
Aye.
Morikawa.
Aye.
Poi Poi.
Aye.
Woodson is excused, Shimizu.
Aye.
Suzha.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. For the next measure on the agenda, HR fifty-eight, HCR sixty-four, um, we are going to insert in the committee report, um, the budget request for line, um, item, uh, BED one forty-four of thirty-six thousand dollars, um, that was submitted by OPSD. And we're also going to add OPSD's amendments, um, that they've stated um, in regards to, um, representation, um, on this working group, um, pointed by, uh, the mayors. Any questions?
I have questions, okay. Uh, really appreciated this because I've not been able to get up to speed on everything emergency management related. I wonder if the Chair would be open, just because I know that perhaps a Water and Land Chair might be interested in serving on this committee, but if there might be an interest in having two members of the House and two members of the Senate. Just because I would have grabbed this and requested that this possibly be under, um, jurisdiction of, of PBS with, because we have management. So I guess the request is, would, would it be possible to ensure that there's two members of the House and two members of the Senate? For the working group? Just because I like to do work.
Oh, okay. Sure, uh, we can go ahead and, um, add representation from the House as well. Are you, one House from, from, one member from the House and then one member from?
Oh, it's currently one member and one member from the Senate, but add, so that there's two members.
The members each, okay.
I'm looking at the Chair of Water and Land if he wants to serve on it.
I will, you don't have to write my name into it, but I will come and attend.
Well, I guess if there's like, if there's two of us.
Yeah.
Who are interested.
Okay. I'm fine with that as well, okay. So we're also going to, um, take those recommendations as well. Two representatives from the House and then two from the Senate. Anyone else with comments or concerns? Okay, seeing none, uh, Chair for the vote.
Okay. Um, we are voting on HCR sixty-four and HR fifty-eight. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, knowing the presence of all members. Are there any reservations or no's? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, uh, we're now going on to HR fifty-nine, HCR sixty-five. I am going to pass this as is. Um, I understand the concerns made by, um, OPSD and LUC. But there is an interest in, um, in fast-tracking some of these requests. Um, and I understand it is being worked on within the departments, but, um, I am going to pass this as is, any questions or concerns?
I have concerns, I'm gonna be a no on this one.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Vice Chair, Chair?
I'm just, um, just noting my reservations.
Okay.
And I'll be voting with reservations.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, alright, seeing none, um, Chair for the vote.
Okay. We are voting on HCR sixty-five and HR fifty-nine concurrently. Chair's recommendation is to pass unamended, noting the reservations from Representative Biladi and you, no vote from Yuwamoto, are there any other reservations or no's? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, moving on to HR one eighteen, HCR one twenty-two. Um, we are going to adopt OHA's, uh, recommendations of including the Office of Conservation Coastal Lands. Um, and then we're also going to do some technical amendments, um, and also, um, changing some language in the reso where it states that Shipti is responsible to, the island burial councils are responsible for determining if remains found in native Hawaiian barrel sites should be preserved or removed. Um, and then, um, yeah, and that's it, actually. So, any questions or concerns? Yes.
Chair, would you be open to considering the DLNR amendment to clarify, um, one member from each of the island burial councils? Just to recognize the replace-based nature of, for your consideration?
Yes, I, so I, I am not going to take that recommendation up at this moment. Yes, I, so I, I am not going to take that recommendation up at this moment. I think we need, do need to speak to the introducer of the bill at the request of it being only one member.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Chair for the vote.
Okay, members are voting on HR 118 and HCR 122. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there, knowing the presence of all members, are there any reservations? Are there any noes?
No vote. No vote.
No vote from Representative Souza. Anybody else? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, we're moving on to HR 145, HCR 151. I appreciate the discussion on this resolution. I think there's still some work that needs to be done potentially in the interim in regards to better management and also inspections and enforcement of our leases. So at this time, I am going to defer this measure. Any questions? Okay, moving on to HR 185, HCR 191, we are going to pass this as an HD1 and doing some tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. We're also going to include the Governor's Coordinator on Homelessness to be part of the working group, and we're also going to remit a certified copy of this resolution to the private organizations who are invited to participate in this working group as well. And then we're also going to change the year so this resolution is request advisory group to submit quarterly reports to the legislature through 2028, but we're going to just put 2027. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. Chair for the vote.
Okay, members are voting on HCR 191 and HR 185 concurrently. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, knowing the presence of all members. Are there any reservations or noes? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to HR 186, HCR 193, we are going to pass this as an HD1. We're going to adopt the amendments from DL and R. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. Chair for the vote.
Okay, members are voting on HR 86 and HCR 193. Chair's recommendation is to pass this with amendments, knowing the presence of all members. Are there any reservations or noes? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Voting on HCR 197, we're going to pass this measure as is. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. Chair for the vote.
We're voting on HCR 197. Chair's recommendation is to pass this, what was it?
As is.
As is? As is? Unamended. Are there any reservations or noes?
Would the, would the Chair be open to pushing the date back to January of 20, or before the 2027? I think the executive director mentioned that he would, the timing of his full report, the full community engagement would be completed.
We're on one.
We're already in the vote. I don't think we can.
We're on HCR 19.
Aren't we doing HCR 184?
No, not yet.
Oh, where are we?
Yeah.
Oh, we already did.
Yeah, we did that one already. We're, we're on 197 only.
Oh, 197, sorry.
Yeah.
We're not at 184 yet.
Yeah. But we can do that.
Are there any reservations or noes? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We're moving on to HCR 184 and...
Oh, okay, wait, can you call the recess?
Sorry, recess.
So I said the wrong...
...land. We are going to take a motion to reconsider HR, the vote for HR 186, HCR 193. Chair had stated the wrong measure for the vote, so he's going to redo it now.
Okay, I'm sorry, I said HR 86. It's actually HR 186. Are there any changes in anybody's votes? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, we're going on to HCR 184 again. I am going to take on the recommendation and pass an HD1 made by, actually, that was, the discussion that was made by Representative Biladi for the, for HCDAs to submit an interim report 20 days prior to the January 2026 session and a final report in December of 2026. Okay? Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none? Ready for the vote? Okay. Chair, go ahead.
Okay, members are voting on HCR 184. That's the correct number this time. Chair's recommendation is to pass this with amendments. Are there any reservations or noes? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. We're moving on to HR 124, HCR 128. I am going to pass this out as is. Any questions or concerns? Go ahead, Representative Poi Poi.
Thank you, Chair. I have one minor edit to ask for. Just in, in line one, it says, "Whereas the state is renowned for its pristine beaches", I wanted to ask to change the state to Hawaii.
Right. Okay.
If that's okay. Thank you.
Sure, I will do that. So we're going to change this. We're going to pass this amend, with an amendment, and changing that first line from state to Hawaii. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, seeing none. Chair for the vote.
Okay, members are voting on HCR 128 and HR 124, noting the presence of all members. Are there any reservation, oh, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with amendments, knowing the presence of all members. Are there any reservations or noes? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, you made amendments, right?
Yeah, I made amendments, yeah.
Ask a question.
Of me or her?
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
So, sorry, we actually are done with the questions and concerns.
Oh, no, well, this is, actually, I'd love, I would like to request a reconsideration of HR 145. It's the only resolution, set of resolutions that you, that this commit, that there was a recommendation to defer, and I was just checking in to see, I would like to record if you would be open to doing a, recommend a hold, holding the bill so I can record my support for the resolution, which is allowed through.
Right, right, right. I appreciate your comments. I, I think at this time, I still would like to defer this measure. Yes, thank you so much, though. Thank you. Okay, we are adjourned.